Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is June 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM, 6:02 actually. We are in the lower theater. There is a Zoom link on the agenda that you can click on. As a point of information, we will be having an executive session tonight for a legal update for the board. There will be no action taken, so reporters won't have to hang around and wait for an answer. That being said, I would like to call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of May 17 during your packet. Do we hear a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of May 17.
And the second?
I second.
Motion made seconded to approve the minutes of May 17. Is there any further discussion, corrections, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, there's a correction needed. On page two, it's actually number one, but we're back on page two. It says, "North made the motion to approve, blah, 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 seconded by North." That's not right.
Seconded, same motion, you're right.
So I don't know who's seconded. I think it's maybe Rick.
The very top of the second page with the motions in italics. Brian made the motion and she seconded it. That's what I was going to say, but it's not correct. We're trying to figure out who.
That was a motion to approve the community gardens there on six or six.
I think I'm being seconded.
I think you did.
All right, we'll stand corrected on that. Anything else? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor to approve the minutes would say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, aye. Next item on the agenda is addition to the agenda for routine administrative matters and depressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. All you have done, Scott, done? Anyone else on the board? Right along? Public comment on items not on the agenda. There's three minutes per person. Reporters, I don't see anyone. Someone try to get in.
I'm getting two people now.
I don't see anybody. Anyone else in the AV land there? Have any comments? Jeremy Dunn saying none. Let's move on to...
I do. I have one. I have just a question as a citizen, not as an RLF committee member. Does the board, would the board like to see the RLF loans on a monthly basis or do they typically see them on an annual basis? We discussed this.
Generally quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
We get one generally.
And are you happy with that or would you like to see it monthly just to track people that are maybe falling behind?
I would prefer monthly, having seen what I've seen on the committee. If people fall behind, it's better to know about it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
I think that's just one thought.
Anyone else, comments? Okay. So loaded. And you can get into us monthly if you'd like.
Okay, so are you, do you know when? So that would probably be next month.
The next one would be, is there any...
So we would need to get that on the...
All month to get it ready.
Yeah, thanks.
Would that be a problem for you, Alyssa, or is that easy?
All right, it says the amended report.
Thank you. So I handed out some information to you that relates to one of the projects that's going in this current three-year update to the transportation plan. So you might have read some stuff in the paper recently about projects for DOT projects. This one specifically is a bridge project. You can see sort of the location, where we're at with it, timing and schedule. It shouldn't be that terribly disruptive in relationship. There is a detour. It won't start taking place until 2024. So obviously we have time. The current tip is under comment period. And there is a June 13 Zoom meeting for comment that we're going to be joining for a couple of purposes for projects that are of importance to us. One of those being, if we hear from New Hampshire, we would like to have some indication in our tip as to the Vermont portion of the Vilas Bridge. I did speak to the folks in the southwest New Hampshire Transportation District. There's a, their MPO that has been putting, working with their tenure plan. Originally, if you remember, we talked and they said that back in May they would be taking up the legislation. They're running a little bit behind in New Hampshire, so that when I spoke to their senior planner this week, he said that it more than likely to be approved in June. So at this point, there's been no modifications to the submission. So we still are anticipating that the Vilas project will go forward from there. And then certainly we want to make sure that on the Vermont side that we're getting in line for the public funding for the other portions of that bridge, so that that can be had. So be that as it may. The other thing is, in that three-year window, and the bike ped committee might want to participate in part of this as well, there is no projects identified for Rockingham, O'Vellis Falls, or any kind of additional bike or pedestrian updates. So if they're interested in trying to get some consideration, that would be the time to try to get a comment in during that of a comment period if potentially they wanted to add something within that three-year window. It's much harder to go back after it's adopted and have them modify the transportation plan once it's been adopted. So, yes.
Scott, we're, I'm on the bike ped committee. We're meeting tomorrow morning. What summary would you give me to, how soon do you need a comment?
Well, we're gonna, like I said, if somebody wants to join us on the 13th, I'm waiting on the video link for that, for the particular, you know, for that comment, as well as they'll take written comments as well. But I think it makes more sense to try to do it during that video portion.
All right.
So we'll have that on there.
We do have a couple of small projects in mind.
I think it's good to have, and that's definitely timely to try to get that and participate in that as well.
Same, just as a advisory notice, I believe it's June 20th that the bridge over the Saxon River by the Kuukermans is going to be closed off there. You got features signed, so it's probably going to impede the biking out in that area.
Yeah, and the motors.
Unless they want to plan to do the evil connevo jump over the river.
Right.
Well, there's no way you're going to get there from here. It's all going to have to go over the back Westminster Road.
Yeah, I believe it's two months, I think, is what they're anticipating.
Two months, 60 days is what they're playing.
Yeah. It's all starting when, Peter?
June 20th, I understand, after a long night weekend. So that's going to kind of mess up the July 4th in Saxon River.
Yeah.
So they're pointing their way back and forth over the back Westminster Road. It'll be real fun. Even us coming into a meeting in July is going to be interesting in August.
I'll let the fourths committee know in Saxon River they should plan.
Yeah, just so they have any plans for it that way. But Saxon River, trying to get anything on the, on a project or anything, so.
And the only other sort of update, just for your information, is during, and you have an item on this evening about the home days, and the fire department had asked to also participate with a boot drop they do collections for, for the department. That would be from eight to six, on the sixth, the same day that they're doing the fireworks on the, on the day, you know, so just as an FYI. We've done it the past couple of years. It's not anything that's out of the ordinary. It's just more for your information, so.
Saxon River also does the boot drop. Now, I know O'Vellis Falls always applies for permit to do it. From what I understand, there is a state mandate that they're supposed to ask for a permit to do it on the, on the, on any public right of way, so. Like, Bobby, yeah, I can probably email Amy and just remind her, maybe get a word to the department. It's just formality, but they should do it.
Yeah, it might be a courtesy notification. I've never gotten an actual permit from any of these things, but we can certainly do that, so.
Okay, and your options for Scott?
Is there any hope of someday having silent fireworks? Has that ever been discussed?
Silent?
Yeah, they have, they have fire, fire displays that don't make a big lot of noise.
I, I don't know. I guess that's the first time I've heard of that.
Oh, really?
I don't know. I suppose it's like anything, you could certainly talk to them.
As I know, the great Apollo, the great, the whole home days are still playing on the fireworks, as far as I know.
As of now, they're still anticipating.
Saxon Rivers has declined because of the cost.
Prices have gone up.
Almost doubled their cost over, so they won't be doing it. But there is a state statute that says that anybody who wants to shoot them off privately, they have to get a permit. And the June, January issue to the town. Scott and I discussed this.
Oh, yeah, I know. In my neighborhood, nobody has time to do that all too much. But the, the big fireworks displays really upset the wild animals, the birds, people's dogs. There are silent ones. It would be really a blessing if that...
Takes all the fun off on Brentwood behalf.
Oh, yeah, people like the big ones.
You gotta add those blueberries.
Yeah. Well, I just thought I'd say it anyway.
In that permit for fireworks, private ones, is there a fine if you, or is it just the fire, is it fire room fine?
Because I know in Stickley Field, they shot them off one year and it was that dry year. We could just see that whole field catch on fire and God knows where it would go. And nobody had, could go down there. We drove down there, but there were 50 people down there. And I says, "There's no way I'm going to cause that ground to dump the campfire off." And you couldn't, and who do you contact? I mean, the, the college sheriffs, Trump, and they say you have to call the trustees for it. It's crazy. Nobody takes responsibility, so maybe this should be different.
Isn't that how the house on Barker Street burnt down?
Right.
That house on Barker Street that's burnt, didn't it burn up on 4th to July 12th?
Well, you can't figure whether it did or not. I don't think it was all the fireworks.
I don't think it related to fireworks. Unfortunately, I think it was, it was kids.
Yeah, it was kids.
Okay, no further questions for Scott on your report?
That question's Elon.
Yeah, go ahead. What is the timeline on getting together an RFP for the group and the windows on this building?
We have an engineer coming to give us some additional input into the weight reduction and then also what options are available to us for a new membrane, as well as can we structurally support some sort of solar array or other type of, well, actually it would be a solar array, if that's any other thing that we could potentially do for a sustainability project. So we have a contractor, an engineer in firm. We're hoping to get those details worked out so we can put together a scope. So hopefully it should be done through the summer.
Great. I have a question for you, Scott. A couple of months ago, you said you were working to find a new, possible new vendor for the tech support.
Yes.
You spoke to some people in Keene. I saw that it's a, costs us what, $2,600 bucks a month or something for that?
We had a couple of people interested. We met with one group, the tech group, as well as the group out of Keene. The Keene group could not come up with a full proposal. They were not capable of handling all the different pieces of our network. Since then, we have met again with Dominion Tech. As a matter of fact, we met with them today. They do have a new technology person, as well as a new person that they assigned to our account, who's sort of our tech, in-house tech guy. He's a major improvement over where we work. So from a staff perspective, the staff is much more satisfied. We talked today about some strategies, about looking at moving off of servers, getting into more cloud-based applications and some other alternatives that'll save us some money. So I think we're moving in a positive direction right now with Dominion Tech, so let's see how that progresses.
Thanks for your opinion.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's move on to the agenda. The first item is to review and update the cemetery mowing contract and birdhouse proposal. Scott and I did meet with a multiple people Friday, last Friday, and all it's got to take from there.
Yeah, so we did meet with one of the principals. We didn't, went over a few items just as a, I think he was a little bit naive as to how government works in relationship to state bills. So, you know, there's a lot of back and forth in the paper about what his invoices were, how it was paid or not paid. And basically, we cleared up all of his issues in terms of how it has to submit invoices, how they're, how they're expected to be paid in our process, so I think he understands how things are, how things work on the municipal side. The other thing we did do is reviewed his, his agreement, because as you guys remember, when we did offer up the proposal, we had put into the contract a certain number of mowings and trimmings in the year. So there was 10 mowings and, 10 mowings and trimmings and four mowings only, plus the cleanup in the spring and cleanup in the fall. So he did the cleanup, he fell way behind, obviously, on the mowing and trimming and had, had not caught up. And so this week, he is scheduled to do the meeting house, which he has been at, and then he was supposed to go to Cambridge Port and then Saxon River. And the goal is, as Peter and I talked to him, is we wanted to have him cut all five locations within the month of June, at least one time per week through the month, to see how that handles with the weather and grass growing, and we'll see how it looks as we approach the 4th of July. Typically, after that, it starts to get a little warmer, grass doesn't grow as quickly, and you can start to stretch out maybe every, you know, 14 days to three weeks, kind of, you can start to stretch out that, that window. So we'll see if he can keep up his schedule and maintain. He does have crews and equipment and manpower, so we'll see how he does for the next month.
I did tour, mentioning the meeting house. That's been mowed, it looks pretty nice. The only thing it didn't get mowed was the bank, over the bank, that state bank between the meeting house road and the top of the hill. So they're gonna, Scott sent them a map showing where they should be mowing. All the trimmer work over there, because there's no way you can put a, you can't really not, like, right down straight. And they were mowing Saxon River this morning as I was going in to pull and check. They were going right at it, so that should be done. So with that underway, where they should be on a regular rotation. We've also mentioned to them the, the tomb area out here on 121, they're coming in. It has been mowed, and I think they thought that was a park area, because Eric Long, Eric Clark used to mow that and is technically part of Oak Hill. So they'll be mowing, hopefully they'll stop the town line in Westminster and make theirs aren't look like, you know, that's their problem, not our problem.
So we'll see how he performs. Like I said, you know, we've, I think at least cleared out all the initial concerns, so now it's just a question of weather and performance, so we'll see how he does.
I know this winter, I walk at Oak Hill very often, and there was tremendous trees down and everything. The spring cleanup was a big deal for them, I'm sure, more than they ever anticipated. The roads were horrendously rutted. You couldn't even drive in on the dirt parts and the trees all that.
It gets into the longer-term question, and Elijah came to my office and has raised the issue of, are we maintaining the cemeteries to an appropriate level based on, well, he had some historical photos of some of the, some of the previous maintenance, and it's, quite frankly, it's nowhere near the level of what it had been maintained in the past. We don't have a maintenance plan, per se. What you see is what you get, and that is the mowing and two cleanups. That's basically our, our maintenance plan for the five cemeteries. We don't plan or program additional capital monies. If there's things that are broken, I guess we do it on an ad hoc basis. As Bonnie says, when there's bad weather and we have lots of trees and other types of debris down, that's sort of handled in those two cleanup periods. We have a tremendous number of stones that are overturned or out of place, and, and quite a few of them are, are older and probably need to be handled by people that are skilled. You know, it's not just some, you can just hire a contractor with a wrench on the back of the truck and just have them haul them up. I think you'd end up with all sorts of problems. So long term, it's, it's an issue that we'll have to look at in more detail as we talk about budget and how we're going to think about this as we go forward. So it is not an area that we have funded in the past, and if those are some of the things the board wants to us to look at, we'll certainly come back to you with types of activities and some other things that might help enhance the looks of the facilities. And like anything in the budget, there's always competing priorities, but we could certainly at least bring it to your attention as we go through that process.
I think there's a lot that we could do. I think the, the cemeteries are in deplorable condition right now. It's really a shame that we've let it get so far, but there's just never been any plan of how to deal with them. And, you know, we, we can't just let them sit there and just, you know, the stones just fall into the ground. You know, these cemeteries are a big part of our heritage, and they're extremely important to, you know, represent the people who made this town, and we should be stepping up to honor that. And the way they've gotten is just not acceptable. And Walter Wallace is here tonight, actually, and the historic preservation commission has been looking at this problem lately, and I think that we could really use the support of the select board to move this forward and try to make some real difference in the condition of our cemeteries.
Another thing, I know from walking so much at Oak Hill, is people come from long distances to find the grave of a relative or a friend or something like that. I've encountered people very, very frequently, wandering around there all befuddled, you know, trying to find somebody's grave. And it, it is, it is bad to have it look like we don't care about the cemetery, yeah.
Something for us to look forward to.
I think that we need to think about...
Line in the budget.
Yeah.
Yes. And I think that we need to think about who's in charge of the cemeteries, you know, what kind of plans, you know, do we have to address this? I think that we should look at forming a cemetery commission. I think that we need to really seriously think about this.
I think you would need to do it that way if you, I mean, as it stands right now, it's really just the mowing contract. There doesn't, there isn't really anybody...
You do have it sexed on the cemetery, it does have the budget.
That, that does that. Who's the section of the cemetery?
Malcolm Potter. He's been there for, doing it for years. If he sees something he needs done, I can tell you right now that the chapel of Oak Hill is, the roof is something to replace for a charity by Jones Brothers.
Oh, that's nice.
So when they get to it, there's, you know, they're, why don't you get my roof finished now? We gotta get that done first.
Do Peter's first. Yeah, and the Little Bizie Bone needs work and stuff like that. But I, I think a committee would be really good. And, you know, you might be able to get a lot of volunteers interested in, in the spring exclusive on...
And we have time getting a lot of volunteers already, and Walter actually would could tell us more about...
Yeah, we'll get to, into the section, I think the next one.
I think he wants to comment on the cemetery issue, so.
Yeah. Okay, we got that done now.
Comments on the cemeteries? I think Walter had a specific comment about cemeteries.
Yeah. If I may, just let folks know that as part of the community conversations that the historic preservation commission and the Rockingham Meeting House Association have scheduled back in March, again, early in May, one has been looking at the future of the meeting house and some of the issues around ongoing conservation restoration, knowing this is a very expensive property over time, and we're trying to figure out ways of how to do it with National Park Service funding sources, and to address not only the meeting house building itself, but the larger national...
Hey, don't interrupt him, he's trying to break it down. We're only getting about half of what you're talking about.
Okay, I will, sorry, a bad connection perhaps, but there is a group that's meeting on December 8th, on, on June 18th at 9:00 AM at the meeting house. A group of citizens who have stepped forward as volunteers to look at how we can proceed in conserving and restoring the meeting house graveyard. It's part of the national historic landmark. We have a $7,500 grant from the State Office of Historic Preservation to help us develop and provide training for volunteers to do some of the simple assessment and simple cleaning of the smaller headstone, many of which are falling over or have fallen over. We're going to be looking at how can we best organize ourselves. Stay tuned for some workshops probably done in, not only association with the National Parks Service, but also the Vermont Old Cemetery Association. It'll be a collaborative effort, and the effort is to try and restore much of what has literally been tumbling down in a nationally significant graveyard and cemetery. So I want to make sure that people know that that is underway, that there is some movement in the direction of addressing. And I might also point out, and you may recall at the last, it's the last select board meeting, approval for the town Republican Committee to do volunteer work around the meeting house. With change for time to use the meeting house for the regular monthly meetings, they were up there, they cleaned an entire head road. They did all kinds of work on the grounds and on the historic landscape. So we're starting to make some volunteer efforts to try and deal with some of the issues of the graveyard out there. I just want to make sure that...
I feel like his microphone isn't picking up, yeah.
Well, thank you for what we could hear anyway, Walt, which was not very much. It'll pick up on the next item here.
Knock on door, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to item number two, which is consideration, $10,000 reserve for the Rockingham Meeting House Historic Structures Report.
Before we jump, Peter, I know we've added the item just from Peter Bergstrom about the birdhouses. I just wanted to, not necessarily get a permission, but just if there was any consideration from the board, just to get back in touch with Peter. He had asked about, about these and just wondered to see if there's any feedback from the board before, before we moved on.
I think it's a great idea and the fact that the kids are building the bird boxes and the bees installing them and bluebirds, you know, cemeteries are great habitat for them. They like the open space, so I think it's a, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a beautiful idea.
Well, there's a consensus of the board, we can have Scott contact Mr. Bergstrom and give me okay.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure there's nobody, any other concerns. Okay, very good. Thank you.
That was code item two, consideration of $10,000 reserve for the Rockingham Meeting House Historic Structures Report.
So I just included in your packet just some background information, which Walter has been, has been working through with some of his activities out at the meeting house. And as, I think people sometimes get a little frustrated by saying, well, you know, we've had various reports on conditions of various pieces of the structure. What this is going to do, and this is a requirement of some of the higher level of grants that we're pursuing for some of the larger projects at the meeting house in order to be eligible, for example, for, say, of America's Treasures Grants or grants that might fall within some of the Department of Interior of Section 106 type of responsibilities. You really have to have this completed and embedded, and most of the time it has to then obstacle through your state historic preservation folks, which I'm sure will also be a participant, which then sort of puts you in a, in a, in a better position to then go forward and request some of these higher-end grants, which is part of what Walter is trying to do to start offset some of the larger costs of some of the major renovations, things like foundation work, updating the plaster and finishing the plaster work, doing some of the woodwork within the actual, inside the building, some of those types of things, some of the roofing, and then ultimately even looking at not just the structure, but also, as he talked about, the entire, what is it, three or four acres? I don't remember exactly what the meeting house property is, but looking at some of the other things there, the Hearst building, the graveyard, and then the other pieces that encompass the entire meeting house property. And what it'll do then is, he has a proposal once this is approved, he does already have some money from donations and from other sources that he'll then put together with, potentially with some of our money if it's necessary, to finalize, he'll go out for proposals, he'll have a company or a contractor who will come in then and do this work and then provide a more comprehensive support, which will then be the foundation for the next phase of his funding stack, which will be, he's... which will be, he's asked for progressive directed support from our state senator, or our, our, from Senator Sanders' office, as well as he's looking to try and receive a Save America's Treasures grant, which are very competitive, but are also much more lucrative in terms of the amounts of money that he can receive to help with some of the projects that he wants to accomplish. So this is another step in that process. And what our $10,000, if it's not necessary for this phase, because he just doesn't know yet, we don't have bids back, or proposals back, then the potentially the $10,000 could be then used for his match, which will be required of whether he gets a Save America's Treasure or other types of grants, all have a local match requirement, so then he could use that $10,000 as part of his match. So the money would not be necessarily sitting idle, it would then go to work on the next phase. So it's just an opportunity, I think, to move, move that along.
It's got a $25,000 donation, will that go to the town, to the, is there a commission that Walter's group, where will that land?
Well, I think that went through, I believe, the association, if I'm not mistaken. And Walter would administer that as part of, of, of part of this Historic Structure Report process. But it's in our, I believe it's in our funds now, yeah. I think Walter's back, he has a new headset on, so.
Headset on, this work, can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little better, Walter. Give it a shot.
Yep.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Scott, for a very nice outline of what we're trying to accomplish right now. I can say that, uh, that within the last couple of weeks, besides that, besides receiving a $25,000 anonymous donation towards this project, we also have $5,000 that has been, that has been put forth by the Preservation Trust of Vermont, as well as another $5,000 we have for a window assessment. We have another grant from the State Office for Preservation. We have a total right now of about $35,000 in hand. And RFP is out to a number of engineering firms, architectural, historically oriented firms that work on structures like Meeting House, like our Meeting House. And uh, they, the RFP is out for what the National Park Service defines as a Historic Structure Report, which follows a very set pattern of assessing the condition of a building. We have a lot of, can folks hear me?
Yes.
You're doing all right, we're getting most of it.
Okay, good. I just wanted to check in rather than keep going on.
Good, good thinking.
The uh, uh, Historic Structure Report will bring together a lot of the individual assessments that we have, we've been doing this kind of piece mail over the last few years. Intent of this report is to pull all of that together, as well as any new findings from field study on the part of engineers, so that we have a really good handle as to what really needs to be done to stabilize the building to, that when we do the replastering or the, not the replastering, but the plaster restoration, that it's not going to result in cracking plaster five years down the road. We want to make sure that this time around that, that the building is next hundred years. Uh, there was the 1906, 1907 Restoration Conservation Effort, and it's time now for another, if you will, hundred year restoration, ready for the next generation. That's where this is coming from. I'm not quite sure at this point, the RFPs did go out last week. I've already gotten some calls from potential contractors, getting clarification, often asking questions. I've been responding. Hopefully by July 8th, we will have several proposals to choose from. And at that time, we'll have a better idea as to what the actual cost for the HSR will be. Oh, and this is also some that is under the auspices, or this is part of what the Historic Preservation Commission is overseeing this whole project. So I think once we have a better idea as to how we're moving, we'll make a more formal presentation to the Select Board in its advisory.
Okay. Good. So that being said, any other questions for Scott, for Walter, before we get a motion on the floor? Someone would make the motion to do the $10,000 reserve for the Meeting House Historic Structures Report?
Uh, someone would move that we do the $10,000 reserve for the Rockham Meeting House Historic
You hear a second?
A second?
Most of the ladies seconded to set up a $10,000 reserve for the Rockham Meeting House Historic Structures Report as matching funds, if needed. This one question followed, I assume, and we have the funds available in the budget somewhere.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask where it's going. It doesn't, won't come out of the reserve fund, that's separate?
I think we still have the building maintenance funds, so I think we're still okay with operating wise, so.
Okay, it won't have the motion in mind? All those in favor would say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries. This item is to approve.
Thank you, Walter.
Thanks, Walt.
Thank you.
With a letter of intent for the road grants and aid program. There's an item in your package.
So the state has various programs that we participate in, and this is a municipal roads general permit for hydrologically connected municipal roads. And what it does is provides state monies, and then we have to do a local match. Attached to our, our letter of intent, you can see that we're eligible for $48,000 in state money. And then we would have a $12,000 match, so it would be a $60,000 project. We've worked with the state, they have identified various locations that we would work on, so we work off of the list in coordination with state engineers. And so basically, this is an opportunity for us to leverage the state money. We have not identified a specific project yet with this, but we, like I said, we looked at them. I think the last time we did this was Gaskill Road, if I remember correctly. I think that's the last one that was done under this particular program, but it's that type of work. So it's ditching and improvements for drainage.
Okay, we will need a motion to approve letter of intent to participate in the municipal roads grants and aid program. Someone will make the motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second. And authorize the manager to sign said document? Any further questions, Scott?
Scott, will, will this fund any new culverts possibly or code of replacement?
Um, this one particularly is not, usually not for that, they don't normally resize. Sometimes they'll do some culprit work, but like, for example, Litcher, there, there's other sources that we'll look at for those. Because they're a little more expensive and a little more involved. This is really more for ditching and just general, than general improvement drainage.
Okay, motion to be made to approve the letter of intent for the road grants and aid program? No further questions, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion carries. And here comes a good one, folks, approve the equipment, approve the equipment purchase for a loader for highway. Good news or bad news, if you want to call it, it's in your package.
I don't normally do this to you because I like to sort of, you know, work these things through. My concern with this is, we had talked to these folks way back in, in, after the winter season, back in early March, and get a, just wanted to get a cost on what the replacement would be as we were working to budget and other things. And, and so that, that came back. And then most recently, I asked, I asked Andy, well, just give me an update, since it's been a while since March. And the prices had already gone at $5,000 since the price that we quoted in March. And I was told that they're going up another $5,000 in July, if we don't place an order. So that made me a little nervous, thinking that if I wait until our July meeting, it'd be at least another $5,000 for this to go forward. We do have money in our, in our equipment fund for budget, for the coming budget year. The only concern is timing of when this equipment could potentially be delivered. Right now, the, this particular location is telling us that they're being told it could be six months to nine months to be delivery of these loaders at the moment. And that's without any additional supply chain problems, which might crop up between now whenever this thing is actually manufactured and made available to these. So with all that as a background, we do also have a trade, if you notice, as part of this price, you do get a $50,000 trade on existing equipment. It is past its 20-year useful life, it's well past its number of hours of operation. We've spent in the last three to five years, some pretty substantial capital monies to keep it running. Just because these are, these are some of the workforces of the highway department, so they do a little bit of everything. You know, they're, they're involved with loading heavy materials, they load salt, they load sand, they, they do all sorts of, a variety of heavy construction type activities. And so this is really part of our, our winter storm operations, as well as seasonally it helps us with our, just all of the operations that we do that relate to what they do out in the ditches and other places in town. So this is one of the key pieces of our, of our highway infrastructure. So with that being said, I thought it was important to try to see if we could at least approve this so that we could get in touch with the vendor, have our order in place prior to the next round of increases. And that would lock in our price too, so that additional increases, which seem to be coming every three to six months now on this equipment, won't also then impact our prices as we go forward. So it's really sort of a hedge against inflation, if you will, which is why I brought it to you this evening.
This is something that we already budgeted for, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was on our replacement schedule, we had talked about it as part of our highway equipment list.
Right.
I just, unfortunately, because of the way that the prices are increasing, I thought it was important that we try to beat this next round of price increases.
What's, what's the warranty that comes with this?
Well, there's different warranties on different pieces of this. The traditional warranties on this are usually that they'll give you five years on, on powertrain and some of the hydraulics and some of the basic pieces of it. You can buy extended warranties that can go out beyond that. We have not, as, as normal court, normally we have not done that. They get, they can get rather expensive, but rather you go out on some of these official enhanced warranty periods, so.
A partner of mine who works with this kind of equipment said that the right to repair, you know, the amount of, number of items that our in-house diesel mechanic can touch is now shrinking. And that he, his company has to pay the big money to John Deere or Volvo or whoever to even, to do even small repairs. Are we subject to that kind of stuff?
Well, I, I think we're lucky in the respect that the guys that are out in our highway garage are pretty good at figuring out, especially as it relates to our, our plowing equipment and our attachments. The heavy duty stuff like the hydraulics and some of the, you know, we replace hoses, we do the simple stuff. Stuff that's much more involved, when you get into some of the heavier duty work, we've got to go back to the, you know, the manufacturer to get that work done.
Yeah.
And it's expensive.
Yes.
It is, they're expensive to run and maintain, but again, they're part of the workforces, you know. They, they really are, you know, one of the critical pieces of what we do for the highway department.
And will we be using the premium AM/FM radio with Bluetooth and all that? Is that a necessary bell or whistle, or is that?
Well, they do use the Bluetooth quite a bit because, again, we have radios, but not everywhere in town has good radio reception. And our, sometimes it actually gives better communications for them to be able to use
Their cellphone with Bluetooth?
A cellphone with Bluetooth.
Okay.
Especially when you're out in some of these more remote locations, you know, you get down in the dips out in Rockham and you're just not in a place where you're gonna get any cell reception, but.
Anyone else have any questions? Someone would make a motion to approve the equipment purchase and have the manager sign the appropriate documents?
So moved.
A second.
You said it already. I don't need to repeat it.
Get all the motions tonight, it's not fair. Motion's evidently been made, seconded to approve the current purchase for the loader and have the manager sign all the documents. Any further questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. People Bridge Funding Update, Vermont General Fund Bridge Program, this is the off alignment bridge.
Yeah, it's not very often I get to come to you guys with good news from our friends at the federal government. It's just literally dropped out of the sky, but I thought in this case it was important enough to bring it to your attention, so. You know, back in 2020, we signed what is, you know, our typical agreement with the state about bridge replacement. And there's a local share, and then there's a federal share and a state share. And as we talked about, the cost of the off alignment bridge, there was quite a bit of concern from the board, and rightfully so, about just how much money are we committing to this project into the future? And it's still being designed by VHB. And just as a, sort of a secondary comment on that, I have asked them to come and talk to you in September. So they are approaching their 60% design and at that, and then after that, they'll be approaching, by September, they'll be at a point where they're getting ready to go out to bid. So before they get the final design, I wanted them to come back and give you an update as to some of the considerations that the board had asked about. So you can also see visually some of the things that have been built into the design, as well as anything that we want to discuss or potentially modify prior to the final design being put out to bid. So what this letter did is the state, because again, they've been receiving additional money from the US Congress, was able to fund our local share of construction for the town match. So for example, on this traditional agreement, which we have signed, we'd have been responsible for 10%, right? The feds would have paid 80%, the state would have paid 10%. Excuse me, we'd have been responsible for that last 10%. They're now paying for everything except the engineering and the right of way. So this, these are the old cost estimates that I attached, just, just for, you know, just for your information. But as you can see, that town share potentially on the off alignment could have been half a million dollars or more based on some of these numbers, at least 400,000, and we can probably assume that inflation is closer to 500,000. So what's happening now is the state's jumped in and will be picking up a vast majority of that share. So now you'll be looking at, just from an engineering and right of way standpoint, a substantially lower local contribution. So I would think our contribution would be, you know, 80 to 100 grand as opposed to 400 to 500 grand.
Wow, that is, that is smooth.
Uh, before you start clapping.
Is there bad news too?
Well, I, I went back to the online historical documents here, and the previous one, the total cost was somewhere around almost $8 million. And now this has dropped considerably. But you know what I noticed? The old one says, uh, the, there is a pedestrian bridge? These figures are not, there's figures not on here.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Again, this is the old, the old numbers, it went back to this old agreement. You won't have a new set until he meets with us in September, because he'll updated construction.
That's what I said, it's, it's good news in that respect, they're gonna not pay less, but, uh, you know, because they don't even include the, 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 uh, option that if there's issues with the dam, you have to close down, they haven't included costs for that stuff. That's stuff that's gonna be on town.
But again, engineering and right of way is the only thing that you'll be paying for. And those are pretty much fixed costs, right? They're not gonna be the larger pieces like Peter's talking about, where you might have additional costs within construction. That's being picked up at 100%.
Cover our base on that.
So.
And the pedestrian bridge, because we decided not to put pedestrian on the off alignment, pedestrian bridge over the canal is covered.
Well, because we put utilities on the pedestrian bridge, if you remember, it's covered. And that was the key consideration for that.
And also we could do both, though.
They did not support the involvement.
And the, since the pedestrian bridge is a smaller undertaking than a traffic bearing bridge, likely the damage to the canal, I think when they drop the, I understand they're gonna drop a large bridge structure in with the crane, right?
It's all crane, it's all crane, right, they're gonna build, right, they're gonna build floodments and then a crane will let sections into place.
So likely the damage to the canal is much, much smaller than if you add So the likelihood of damage to the canal is much, much smaller than if we had the vehicle.
Let's hope they have a good crane operator.
Three D, exactly.
If you remember the last crane operator we had in town, didn't go so well.
That would have, the accident street took with the, with the tower, they went the wrong way, so.
I'm, I'm hopeful.
That can happen.
Yeah, I'm hopeful we have somebody.
Excuse me, but pedestrian bridge is not gonna cost us anything?
It's gonna be part of construction, so it will not be part of our local share.
So we don't have to pay for them?
No.
It wasn't originally planned in for us, I don't believe it was all in there, but I, I just noticed that some things are on the old, thank you, not on this numbers and I know this is maybe preliminary, but when you see big items like a half million dollars for that pedestrian bridge, it's not on there, you begin to wonder, have they, did they miss something?
Did they just forget about it or?
Yeah, well, there you go, yeah.
All of those, these particular items are in particular numbers, so it hasn't even changed even before we got to the, you know, the last set of numbers that we saw.
Right, these were attached originally to this agreement, so really what this letter is, is modifying this agreement. There will be, I'm sure, another modification to your agreement, which will have a new set of numbers when we get to that point. But I just wanted to give this to you, just to give you a sense of, you know, what they're picking up. So for, for us, in terms of our fiscal impact, this is a huge deal.
Really is.
It alleviates a huge amount of additional costs where we probably would have had to gone out and, and bonded for that additional amount.
And, and if, I'm, if I'm remembering right, we were looking forward to paying off some old bonds before we had to really tackle this one, right?
When we looked at our bond, our debt schedule, there was a dip in our, our debts as we were going forward, because again, the construction for this won't, won't occur until probably, I think we're gonna finish design in twenty two and bid, it probably will start in, utilities will start in probably late spring or early twenty four and then it will go through twenty five, so. There wouldn't be a drop off all the time we had the bond.
So we should be looking forward to fairly comfortable situation then after we deal with that existing debt, right?
Well, I mean, we also have to think about Bridge Street Bridge, I mean, we talked about putting money aside in our next budget for these bridge projects so that we don't get hit with a huge issue all at once, so putting ten or fifteen or whatever we can aside into the bridge rebuilding fund, I think we should still think about that, because we have other bridges to go. We're lucky, we don't have to face this one, but that's just one of many.
Yeah, this is again, you know, I don't, I don't very often give kudos to our federal friends because more, more often than not, they're creating headaches for us, not helping us. In this case, it was a tremendous help. So it really was uh, great to, great to see and on the Bridge Street side, if, if we talked about this, um, we've gone through the first phase of an enhanced um, request through our regional transportation group to have our Bridge Street Bridge listed as one of their preferred uh, capital uh, investments for, I think it's in the next transportation plan. So we made the first cut, now we have to see if it goes forward as a fully funded proposal. Because again, the state has additional money, if that's the case, then potentially we'll be in a good position to line that bridge up right after this project is done, to jump right into that. Um, so that would be good news. Then if we do get violas, again, if you remember, violas doesn't start construction until twenty eighth. So it would literally just go from Depot to Bridge Street to violas. So by the end of the decade, if, you know, you're an optimist, you could have three brand new bridges. Um, and you know, for the rest of our lifetime and probably our kids' lifetime, then we'll have to worry about replacing bridges over the river.
That's great.
So.
The other thing that crossed my mind was the, of course, the state owns that uh, parking lot a lot down there. A right of way over that, with a town highway over that. And if there's any contamination there, who's gonna get stuck with that? I imagine somehow, I envision a bargaining chip going on here between, they'll give us a right of way, but we'll, we're gonna have to eat the costs of, which technically is, isn't the way to do it. I don't mind inflation because it's the owner of the property that's facing cleanup, if there's any in there, we all know there is some.
Are you talking about Depot or Bridge Street?
Depot.
Depot. I don't think, at this point at least, and, and again, it's a little premature because we won't know anymore about specific items until we talk to the engineers in September. But at this point, there has not been any, any conversation about additional uh, town participation and additional costs, so. I'll keep my fingers crossed that we're, we're in clear here.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, let's move on to another hot topic. Consideration of approval of RLF funds. There appear to be two of them in your packet.
Yes. The um, RLF committee has met on a couple of different occasions and had presentations from both of the applicants and um, has, has forwarded for the approval, are seeking approval from the town board for two loans, um, which you see attached here. And um, I think, I don't know if Rebecca Warren, she's here, she was part of the discussion, if there's anything you wanted to add to this or if it's been.
No, I just hope that they read the minutes of the RLF meeting, if they have any questions about the minutes and recommendation.
Reading the minutes, I guess, having been a, just been in RLF funds for several years, um, I, I fail to see how this sort of qualifies. Um, if you look at ineligible activities, I gotta copy a page of the policy here. To replace private sector capital loan, it's ineligible, so if the bank, if they've been refused to the bank and they come finally to us, that means that they're actually looking to replace capital uh, an independent um, investment. So they're alleviating that person or that institution of the risk, which now belongs to the town. Uh, fifty thousand dollars or plus, this is also a real estate purchase, this is not a, a business venture that this person is participating in. It's sort of a third party thing where this person applicant is, is gonna own the property and then hopefully rent it out to somebody to operate, if I'm reading the minutes correctly.
Were we given the minutes?
Well, you didn't get the minutes, you had to go on website to get them off and from what I understand, they just got posted the other day, so. They went looking under RLF one, they were like getting on minutes, but I went in there and, and they say, being familiar with this operation, like, yeah. I just had some.
Yeah, because the minutes, uh, the minutes, it's too bad you didn't have the minutes, because the minutes actually have our questions. So the committee did take the time to question the two applicants before then we went into uh, private session without the applicants. And in the minutes, it clearly shows some of the questions that we did ask the applicants.
Can you share with us some of the answers you got?
Well, you know, you, I mean, we did have some questions and you can reiterate me, with me, about one of the applicants um, who did not have funding from two banks. So um, one of the questions, and she, she's here if she wants to talk, yeah, she wants to talk. So one of the questions that we did ask was that if um, she was not gonna be able to have funding from the committee, would the project continue? She's unable to continue the project uh, unless she gets funding from this committee. And that project is to bring the Bellis Falls diner back online and, and I'll let her speak to how, her dream and her vision for that. Um, and the, the, the recommendation from, and I'm surprised that the chair's not here or Gary's not here.
He's online.
Oh, okay, just in case, where are they? Just in case I, I mess it up, but um, the recommendation from the committee on this one um, is outside the purview of the bylaws. So the, the SLF board needs to know that the committee did recognize the bylaws and this, this uh, recommendation is outside the purview of the bylaws. Um, based on the um, community's bylaw of uh, type of funding and uh, reason why um, why they're requesting funding, don't approve, uh, has not been approved by banks. So um, do you wanna add to this, because we went in, in quite detail in our conversation about this?
Yeah, we spent quite a bit of time on this, the significance of, of Miss Bellis Falls diner for the community and the fact that we have a piece of real estate as collateral. Those two things that we felt that they um, justified are, are going beyond the bylaws in this context.
So reading the bylaw, or the minutes, uh, it appears that the town will have first, first mortgage on it, which means if the loan defaults, the town now owns the diner. And then we either try and sell it or do we open up this capture for town employees? I mean, that's sort of a hard way to look at it, but.
I think I'd recommend we sell it.
To me, those are the questions I would be asking and the second question, one of the first questions when I was on that board was, they had the person that's there to have any skin in the game. They putting any capital up? Because that gives them the impetus to follow through with this. Now, as I say, she's buying the property and then hopefully gonna rent it to an operator. So if the operator is not found or fails to operate, you know.
The chair specifically stated that we were not to discuss the operation of this, we were only approving the loan based on the sale of the building, not the operation of the business that's gonna go in there.
That seems weird.
And that was, that was stated in the minutes, so.
Why is that?
Can I answer that? Yeah. I think it went back to the fact that um, no matter what happened with that property as far as the operation of it, it was, I can afford to pay back what I'm asking for in the revolving loan fund. So regardless of what happened there for breakfast, lunch, special events, pop up dinners, um, it was, that was not contingent on me being able to pay back uh, the revolving loan fund, so that's why it was kind of like being kept.
So suppose you never have a tenant?
Then I, I pay off the revolving loan fund with, with what the board has reviewed my financials and decided that that would be, I could afford that, regardless of the operation. So.
Yeah, we, we calculated what the monthly payment on the loan would be and, and the applicant's income far exceeds that, even when you, when you take out her first living expenses, so. Also, her credit rating is very high and her, you know, the character is one of the key aspects of when you evaluate this, it's sort of, who you take to the dance in a way. And we felt that Deb's record in the community and as a business person, and her resume suggests that she's a good nurse.
And I appreciate that and I think the, the one reason, if you want to, I'll answer, the reason the two banks did not want to get involved was number one, uh, I did not have paperwork to show previous um, uh, income from the diner, that was not available to me. Um, and also they were looking at that property not only as the property, but the operation. And I think that's the difference here in what we just discussed.
One question that has been, what subsequently is, condition? Was, was there inspection, you have a PNS, assigned PNS?
Correct.
Was a building inspection part of that?
Yes.
And if so, did it reveal any significant repairs that we made?
Did not reveal any significant repairs, part of my other, uh, part of the other business, or the other part of the business plan is to um, raise money for the historical restoration of that car itself. And I feel that what I can uh, generate from that will take care of the restoration of the car alone.
Will that come from private donors or from, from GoFundMe?
A GoFundMe.
Sort of way that the flat iron can't do this.
Do you have a, a number in mind about the cost to, to do that?
Um, over time, I mean, I, it's minimal to get it up and running and open. Um, the, over time, I think probably about thirty five thousand within the next year and a half.
To, to, to restoration?
To do the restoration on the car itself.
And Gary has something?
Gary has something, so.
Yeah, which one? Gary had his hand up, I didn't hear.
Yeah, hi, um, I, yeah, so I just wanted to um, uh, just say a couple of points, one to um, to Peter's point regarding um, the applicant having capital in it, uh, the, the purchase is for sixty five thousand dollars and the owner is, does have uh, skin in the game in terms of uh, putting capital in on top of the revolving loan. And second one, I'm probably uh, repeating it, I, I got into the meeting late, but um, the, the committee approved.
You're only getting half of what's done about Gary, I don't know what's going on here.
Pete, pull over.
Uh, per, just um, ninety Rockingham Street as a.
Gary, I'm gonna interrupt you, we're, we're not only gonna have what you're talking about.
As a restaurant and then leasing it for that and.
Gary, we're only getting half of what's done.
Okay, so I guess, um, let me try it without the camera, see if that's enough bandwidth, is that, is that any clearer?
That's better, yeah.
Okay, so just in terms of being outside of policy, um, we, we didn't get into a discussion of the policy in depth in terms of um, what the policies mean and I, I think one, one thing that was brought up was a, uh, ineligibility because of um, uh, private investment and because the applicant is uh, seeking private investors to, um, to pay off the loan and, um, but what the policy says is actually the opposite. What's ineligible is uh, asking for the revolving loan to pay off uh, private debt or a bank loan and, and this is doing the opposite. This is uh, uh, the applicant would be paying off the revolving loan with private investment, which is, is not a problem according to the policy. Um, the, the, the piece of the policy on um, a loan of last resort, uh, the committee felt that we wanted to uh, bring that up to discussion, we, uh, because the revolving loan fund is there to um, uh, help businesses that we feel are um, uh, secure, you know, a, a secure uh, bet to um, to operate a business in town and make that um, possible where it's not, so um, yeah, so we're not clear on what that um, is supposed to mean and why it's in the policy, that we wouldn't want to loan someone who we felt was secure and paying it back, but um, hadn't secured funding elsewhere. So I just wanted to, to bring in those couple of pieces. The, the, the part I was sharing earlier, I think um, Peter had shared that it was important that the applicant have skin in the game and uh, in this case, they, they do, the real estate purchase does have capital from the applicant and some from the revolving uh, loan. Uh, and so we, the, the committee voted to support that as a, a real estate purchase at ninety Rockingham Street and have first position in the mortgage, so I just wanted to um, um, bring up those points and they may have, they may be duplicate from before I got on, but those were the selling it things, thanks.
Gary, I'll, I'll read to you the ineligible uh, activity line and it states, to replace private sector capital lending investment or to eliminate private lender risk, which means the bank is divesting itself so they don't want to take the risk. That's what I'm going at, Gary, I'm, you know, it's right on, right in the policy.
Could we ask the applicant?
That is, that is not what, that is not what happened though, the um, the bank application was to uh, fund a restaurant operation.
All right, we're beating a dead horse here, but that's just my opinion, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
So did you apply for a mortgage on purchasing the property?
I did, yes.
And you were not given that?
I was not given that, again, because I did not provide uh, financials from three years prior. Um, a lot of, the diner stuff.
Right, I, I heard you say that before, but just in terms of purchasing the real estate, I mean.
They wouldn't look at it as just a real estate purchase, they, they, the banks were looking at it as a real estate and business combination. The banks were looking at it as a real estate and business combination. And that's just how the banks are structured. So I was not able to get around that component of it. And that's when I came to the board.
Well, you said you were going to just live in that car. What they give you a loan?
Residential.
Oh, that seems kind of strange, that you can't buy real estate.
Correct, yeah, correct. And that's just the way the banks work. I was not able to find between the two banks I went to. And that was just, they both said.
So your down payment is $2,000 plus, or is?
Did you say that again?
How much of the total cost is this loan covering?
This loan is covering 50 of the 65.
65 is the total cost of that property?
Correct.
Oh, with town.
And she's providing 15.
I see.
So she has skin in the game.
So you're going to put up 15 and town puts up 50?
I'm actually putting up 25. I've got, the first part of my business plan is we have four investors at $25,000. That created the property purchase, created the property insurance, upkeep, maintenance. And that got it ready for an operator to come in on the backside. And left a little money to do some other improvements.
So do you have those, do you have those four investors?
I've got three.
Got three. You need one more at 25.
This group representing two, myself, the third.
I see, so we're two. And you're one, all right.
And the operator, you couldn't be getting.
I do want to point out just as development director that. Just that the building has been empty for a while. It's a hole in our downtown. And it has been for sale in the papers for a long time. And I think this is an opportunity that the committee felt was secure in terms of the owner being able to pay the loan even if the restaurant failed. And it's an opportunity to have activity in the building. If a building's left empty, it's just going to deteriorate. So, yeah, just want to support that getting activity.
Okay, we exhausted the discussion on this item. We have a second one coming up. Someone wants to make the motion?
We're going to do these, move separately on this?
Yeah.
Just need to approve the loan.
There's two loans, two different loans, I don't know.
I move that we approve the loan for the Ms. Bellisfoles' diner to Double Fox, $50,000, 4% for five years.
A second, we're sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing it here and done? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes four to one. Now, Twin Falls Training Center, located in Nine Spencer Drive. In case anyone is not familiar with, Nine Spencer Drive is the old Chamberlain Building up in the industrial park behind what used to be the Lodge Hotel, which is now the motel up there over there.
Oh, okay.
This is Twin Falls Training Center. I guess they've been in two or three different locations from what I've been able to discern. They are using the funds for working capital and purchase of gymnastics and training equipment. The terms of loan is $38,000 for four, 4% for five years. So, you have any comments?
So Twin Falls Training Center already exists somewhere?
It had existed and had gone out.
Yeah, they have two other locations, from what I understand.
Now, this is a reused constitution.
Okay.
Some of the same principles, but at a different location and a different program. Little background, the women applying for this grant have a lot of experience and a pretty significant following. Do you remember La Studio, was that the one in Westminster? I think Cassie, Cassandra Pedego worked there for many years. Send that right back. Yeah, there she is, okay. The committee asked a lot of questions about the commercial feasibility and the fact that they have a really strong clientele already, that they have lots of expertise, and that they provided a crackerjack business plan. They got assistance from some agency developing their business plan. Rebecca, we were pretty impressed with that.
Yeah, it was quite lengthy, involved, very, very detailed. They definitely put a lot of time and energy. It was very professional, professionally presented and well written.
I will recognize you in a few seconds, but you have a question. Did anyone on that board question their quality because of the contamination in that building? If you're going to have kids in that building and exercise equipment, I don't know what part of the building they're renting. I know that was an issue why that building's never been able to be sold because of the contamination in there.
We talked about ventilation because of COVID and gymnasium's amount of air or possibly bacteria or whatever that can pass between users. And they have plans to install a new ventilation system. Maybe you recall that? Yeah, so maybe Sandra can speak to that.
So, yeah, I'll call on you next. So are you aware of the contamination in this building?
No, this is the first we have heard about it. And we have had multiple conversations with the owner of the building.
Okay. Do you, uh?
Yeah, I.
So, the unit that we're going to be located in has been empty for about a year. It has, it looks as though it's been maintained fairly well. There's another business that's been located in that building since 1994, Natural Patches. We've talked to them a fair amount as far as being a tenant. They didn't have any grave concerns. We've talked to a lawyer who's been looking over the lease for us. We will, of course, now be exploring the conversation of any type of contaminants. Regardless of this location, just to clarify, we have not, we have not opened a business nor have we been up and running. We have had two different locations that we have tried to explore. And for numerous reasons, they have not worked out. So this is now our third and a very promising location, although we're clearly going to have to explore that issue. We have acquired a majority of the equipment that we will need. So our big, big goal now is to find our space.
Could you speak to the ventilation question?
Oh, yes. So ventilation wise, we are going to have an HVAC system come in and check out what's already currently in there for a system. There is a large AC unit system as well as heating systems in there. There is some sort of ventilation system. However, I am honestly not educated on the topic. So I'm going to have to have an HVAC system come in, a company come in and just kind of explain to us what we need to do as far as creating clear airflow through there.
You're going to do that at your expense, not the owner's expense?
Yes, the building is as is, it comes as is. We're doing a couple different renovations. We're also looking into updating the lighting system and creating a much more energy efficient system, as well as installing fans and replacing some carpeting and possibly doing some painting and minimal things like that.
So I'm a little familiar with the building. Which, are you building, renting the whole section or just part of it?
Just part of it. It'll just be the middle section. It's 7,100 square feet.
I think the contamination is mostly in the back end of that building anyway, with all the machinery restored or what's operating. It's all oil and grease and things like that in there.
And our section doesn't look to have any contamination of oil and grease on the floor. We would, if that was an issue, we would ask the town to clean it as well as look into just having it fully inspected to make sure that there was no health risks or concerns.
Anybody else have any further questions?
How did this work? Like if we approve this loan and then there is a problem with the building, right?
Well, they just don't pick the loan.
Then the loan just gets extended.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sides for lack of action, basically.
So can I speak to the contamination piece, sir?
Well, you can try.
So this area of the building. This area of the building had a food operation in it and was licensed by the Department of Health. And certainly due diligence would, would say to check that, to check that out. But this, this area of the building is pretty clean and has operated with that food processing license.
Okay, any further discussion? Ricky, you're starting to kind of tend to put your hand up.
Well, I was just wondering if the board has an interest in their, knowing their business background with this kind of training. They have quite extensive experience.
Did they operate La Studio or something like that?
Yeah.
Wasn't La Studio your, your people operated?
I was the head recreational coach as well as one of the head competitive coaches at La Studio. And I have done an extensive amount of gymnastics training through USA Gymnastics in USA Gymnastics University, as well as my business partner, Carrie, who is on here as well. And she has more extensive business experience than I do.
And the collateral would be the equipment? We have collateral on this?
Well, the ministry, the lane is on the equipment.
Equipment, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Someone want to make a motion?
I move to make a, that the revolving loan fund make a loan of $38,000 at 4% for a term of five years to the Twin Falls Training Center.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions remain seconded to approve the loan for the Twin Falls Training Center for $38,000 at 4% for five years. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay? If you carry. Done with that deal.
Good luck, everyone.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Heard a lot of parents lamenting about not having gymnastics since.
One other interesting fact.
Since La Studio closed.
Gary, one other interesting fact I noticed in the minutes. This may be for the members of Arrow Left, too, is that, as you know, Scott's a de facto member, a non-voting member of that. But I noticed that he made the motion. I think it would have been some of the actual loan, loan fund appointed people that made that. It's just a curiosity because I, you know.
Scott, can you, you're voting. You're voting every year, don't you? I just said the motion's going to court for discussion. All right, yeah.
Okay, item seven. Greater Paul's Region of Chamber of Commerce requests for permit fee waiver. Is that, I assume at the waypoint sign?
Yes.
I believe the policy states that we can reduce the fee, but there's no allowance for a waiver. Alumni Association came in and asked for a waiver also, and we gave them a reduced rate. I think it was somewhere in the vicinity of $25.
I think this one isn't asking for to have a, you know, one half, not $50.
Well, as you say, it's $25, so we paid what the alumni association did. To be fair, across the board, if we're doing it for one, we should do it for the other.
Yes.
Because the policy does say that the way, the fee cannot be waived, but it can be reduced.
Yeah.
So, someone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we reduce the fee for the, this is the waypoint center for the opening day celebration.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We made to approve, or to waive, not to waive, but to reduce the fee to $25 for a policy for Greater Paul's Region of Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Melissa's been waiting very patiently with trucked nations because her item is on the agenda. Have financials finally.
I'm never patient.
Okay, Ricky, you're probably going to pick on the same ones I have. I know that in office, the phone and that IT stuff is really fucking me.
Yeah, the IT stuff.
The phone works over than the IT thing. I can't believe the phone costs is that much.
It's terrible.
It's terrible.
It's all because it's switched to the voice over IP.
The good news I did see was the recycling center, which is like, one of my best users, breaking even.
Breaking even.
Except for the tough nut of the material way. That's $48,000 item sitting out there. If we got to figure out how to get that, rid of that. Maybe we dump it all to the bank. That wouldn't be quite right, but. But expenses and income are balancing out. Of course, we've got the rest of the month to go, but I don't think we're going to, it's not going to cut $48,000. We might put a little debt in that, but.
Maybe people need to recycle more. There's no way to recycle this.
Yeah, it's sold, but it's for the cost of recycling. We're not charging for bottles, cans, cardboard, so. Okay, Ricky, you have anything?
No, Scott spoke to the question that I had about the tech support. That was the number that jumps out at me.
That tech support, too, should start, should come down. One of the main reasons for that meeting was I was noticing that there were a lot of 365 licenses that we don't need. So they're going to consolidate all of that. Hopefully, we'll bring that cost down.
And we pay per call plus, plus the $2,500 a month for $2,600, is that right? Or is that $2,600?
That's everything. Voice over IP doesn't have any additional costs.
So many times you call up with a problem, it doesn't cost us more.
Right. I think originally, when we were discussing going into this, I think there was a discussion with our previous finance director that this would save this morning. I don't think that quite happened.
It's got it a little bit more into the century, but definitely it's not money saving.
Can we bin, bin it to another vendor or is it a sole source?
Consolidated, we need.
Want to gain it now?
Or the.
Well, we have.
Are they the same name?
Yeah. They keep changing names, but it's basically the same.
Well, I can call voice over internet to any other service free to Vietnam. Paying all this money. I'm going to look at that number, actually, because I'm.
It is.
I feel like something isn't being. Next year, I didn't even budget that much, so I think there's something, something is not true in there.
Can we call up other towns and see how they are managing their telecommunications?
Well, I know that in Petney, we switched and that it did raise the cost. It's more expensive.
V.I.P.
To do that. There are advantages, but unfortunately it. I'm going to look at that. I'll let you know later.
Thank you.
Do a quick, quick run through here. I noticed recreation there, maintenance, wages and maintenance. It's almost double, better than double. Why, do we have a next wage rent? What's going on with that?
No, I think you.
Except $12,500, we only got $500 in the budget.
What page did you owe?
10th of 18th, about halfway down the recreation budget. Wages, maintenance.
I think it's because there are a few people that are being coted to the maintenance. They no longer work in the other areas. So those other areas are under budget now.
Yeah, he's 50, almost.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know, I kept asking him if that's really where he wants them to be paid at when he keeps saying that. So I'm assuming that, that those are being coded properly. Like one person is no longer working at the playground, they're, they're being paid in the maintenance instead, so.
Because I, I think at one point, didn't we have some problems with that furnace up there or something?
We put a heat pump in because the furnace was not working and that.
That's what I was thinking, that's probably some of the.
I don't think we've had a problem since, so.
I don't think these few people that are doing this maintenance is that kind of maintenance. It's more like cleaning and.
Cleaning up after events and.
Yeah, labor players maybe. Something like that or something.
So that's coming out of the, what would have been wages playground is actually.
Some of it, yeah.
Right.
So we have a contract with, with Bellis Falls Trades that will generate eighty-five hundred dollars a year in, what do we call it, rent or, how, how will that be characterized? And where will that money?
Well, we haven't done a lease yet, so we'd have to make that determination and have to come back to the board. So we didn't record any of that revenue or, or do anything with it for budgetary purposes until you guys approve that agreement.
One thing you don't want to forget is that they're requesting that we provide water and electricity to there before, and that's all going to be included in what comes off the stock.
I thought they'd like, let, let the water thing go, didn't they?
As far as I know, they're going to go on to the plants for the garden bucket, okay? And they would have to talk to the village on the water as soon as they want to hook up to that water line out there. I don't even know where it comes off, whether it's school or off of Atkins.
And is that our, I, it's our responsibility?
It's, it's what they're requesting in their, what they're requesting in their proposal plus any contamination issues they want town to take care of. So.
Yeah, but that, I think that was under discussion as I, as I recall for our meeting with Scott when they finalized the, I don't think it was.
Well, that's gonna, they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
And raised, raised beds are above ground, so they're bringing their own soil, right? So contamination issues, some soil should not be.
Or they're breeding the minutes, if you look at the minutes, our minutes, the woman there stern said that even though they use raised bed, that might still be a problem. So.
It shouldn't, no.
Just according to the.
All you have to do is cap out of the, cap under the soil.
Yeah, Bonnie's worked in this realm. You've worked with community gardens before.
We just, just cap it and then put the.
Okay, any further questions on the financials?
No, we're not. Oh, just, I think I asked you already, the last meeting was, are there new dry car processing system? Is that online at this point?
It is not yet. It should be soon. The last time I asked, he said they will contest you when it's ready, so I'm kind of.
Okay, good. So it's in, in the works. Hopefully by next fiscal year, we'll be up ready.
It's supposed to be the end of June, beginning of July, so hopefully.
I've got a question. We don't have to pay the two percent fee. What about the lease on the solar array?
We still don't have that money, and the last I spoke to them, they were still, they had to do a re-submit to the state for some access for their electric. So that had held up the final. So that was back in May. I have not talked to them this month, but I will try to see if we can get that resolved in this budget year.
And, and the fuel costs, you guys have already, we talked about that before, but you, have you sort of done a?
We forecast an increase, but I, I think we're all sort of holding our, I don't know what we're going to see for a while. Nobody is giving us even, you know, we were trying to do something just to see if there was something early, you know, looking at even July as opposed to what we normally do in August or early September, and nobody's giving any pricing, pre-buying. And it could end up being because the prices are so volatile, I'm not sure that people will lock in pricing. You might end up on a, yeah, which is the worst of all worlds. And right, we're at the complete mercy of the market at that point.
And the third thing we could do to reduce our fuel consumption?
More smilers.
Do you remember how cold it was in here? No, I'm not telling you about that. I'm talking about like the trucks either.
The uniform.
I, I drive by town trucks and they're idling in the summertime, and I'm saying, jeez, we're way too cool. We is.
Yeah, I've seen that too. I've seen that too.
Yeah.
In the winter time, I've got to understand that they're on. And, and they got to get warm because, you know, I, I can understand, but I agree that there are times that you go by and there's a truck sitting there and it's just running away.
Depends on what they're doing. There are times when we have to do traffic because they have the lights on for, you know, for safety indication, yellow lights.
One time I was, uh, over at Agway, I guess it was, and Rockingham Town Truck, radio blaring, AC going, windows down, and the guys are in there. They're going to balk or something, I don't know. I, I made my purchase, I came back out, the truck was still there.
Were they boogying like the traffic control guy on one twenty-one?
No, does he dance?
He's boogying, he's got, he's got something going, I don't know what it is, but. He's not bad, he's not bad.
Yeah, I think there might be a lot of people interested again in energy conservation. It's sort of been a while since people have paid attention, and I think these prices are going to wake a few people up.
Yeah, I think the, well, there's an energy group, you know, Peter, Peter Burge's group, they have interest in this.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on the whole financial. Let's move along here. Review, uh, approval, order to bill the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Go ahead, second. Motion being seconded, the second is for Bonnie, so we get the minutes correct this time. She didn't make the motion, Rick did.
I'm in.
Susan.
Susan, excuse me.
Yeah, actually Elijah's second.
Any questions on the financials? I don't know if anybody looked at them when they came through. I didn't see anything, it's stuck online. Okay, motion's being seconded. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Coming around. Item, so the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting. I can't think of anything I thought like that except for financials again. That should be the last one for this year.
Yeah, we probably won't be done during the end yet. It'll be a soft close because we still have items coming through until the end of the month, July to the day.
Okay.
It is to have a soft close.
Anybody thinks of anything?
Uh, the, the, you'll update us on the tax sale.
Yes, we've been working with Ray's office. The notices have gone out. We did get another payment through the state program, so another person dropped off. I think we're up to thirty-nine or thirty-six, I can't remember today's number.
People who dropped off the list.
No, people that are still on the list. I think there's still thirty-six that are still going through the process. So we're making slow progress.
Even those letters arrived, they'll.
Somebody did pay from just, they just paid.
The letters generate usually activity. You'll see that number decline fairly quickly.
And they just, they just went out yesterday.
Okay, about reviewing the gen items for joint board meeting. I can't think of anything for joint board, but we got a couple months to think about it. It ends on September twenty-seventh. Okay, other business, Bonnie?
No.
Roger?
No.
Sue?
That's it.
Yep. Scott, can you give us an update on our urine station down there? The building's almost up, uh, and the processing on the recycle.
A little bit of electrical work to run that, um, that vacuum machine that Peter we saw, the one that was in Red Bull. So that'll be the next thing that they do. They invented some equipment. If you remember, they have that, that one machine. And then after that, I'm guessing it should be operational sometime in July or maybe early August.
Um, what about the credit card processing? I understand they got the electrical line over to the.
They get the line installed, so when we get the new system in, they will be part of that as well out at the recycling center.
And we have no bids on the famous shed down there?
No.
I got a few other avenues I'd like to explore. I'll send an email on those. We'll get a rebuild thing delivered there and just all put together. We just got to plop it on the ground.
Okay.
I got a couple of people I know that can maybe do that. Okay. Every member of the business, I'll take a motion to go into executive session. We will need two of them, and the item number twelve, who wants to try it? I have all the motions. We need to vote on both.
I move to find that premature general public knowledge of.
Can we invite you?
Confidential attorney-client communications made for purpose of providing professional legal services to the body.
We can invite me and.
Will clearly place new salary in a substantial disadvantage by.
Twelve.
Oh, confidential attorney-client communications made for purpose of providing professional legal services to the bodies.
Second.
Second.
Motion being seconded. We just need to vote on this one first, and then you read the second one. So all those in favor, go into executive session for a legal update. Say aye.
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 Uh, all those opposed made, set a motion, and then we'll invite the.
Yep. I move that the board enter executive session to discuss the, what am I discussing? Confidential attorney-client communications.
Same thing.
And invite the manager and.
Alyssa.
Rebecca, as a, as a representative.
Everyone's sitting here, Alyssa.
As a representative of the.
That one and that one.
Right.
Into.
Use, you said use.
All he does, into, under provisions of Title I, Section three one, three A, one of the statute.
There.
More complicated than I thought.
All right, motion being seconded, go into executive session, and as soon as Scott turns TV off and the doors are closed, all those opposed, uh, in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed made.